Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Today is Thursday, April 27th, and the time is 7:05. Could we have a roll call, please?
Alternate Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Korzak.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Nicol.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Sims.
Here.
Vice Chair Lowell.
I'm not vice chair, just commissioner.
Oh, I'm so proud, I apologize.
But I am here.
Commissioner Lowell. Chair Barnes.
Present. Thank you. Commissioner Sims, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please. Thank you. The next item on, excuse me, on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Also move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Baker and second by Commissioner Sims. I guess we need a roll call vote.
Motion vote.
Ah, there we are. Mr. Baker, could you hit the mover button?
Got it.
Want to please vote?
And vote.
Oh, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero. I think I need some IT training.
I got you.
Thank you. So the agenda is approved. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission request special items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We have no consent calendar items.
Actually, you do, the approval of the minutes would be.
Ah, excuse me. Inexperience is showing. Thank you. All right. Approval of the minutes from the meeting of March 23rd, 2017.
A motion to approve.
What do I need to do up here, boss?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Lowell and a second by Commissioner Nicol. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Passes unanimously. Minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is the public comment section of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter either under the public comment section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form must be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. In speaking to the commission, members of the public may be limited to three minutes per person except for the applicant for entitlement. The commission may establish an overall time limit for comments on a particular agenda item. Members of the public direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission and not to other members of the commission, the applicant, the staff, or the audience. Do we have any comment slips?
We do.
We do? All right. Thank you. Oops. All right, there's no one showing on the list. Could you call the first speaker?
Kathleen Dale.
Yes.
Good evening, Kathleen Dale. I wanted to just address you on three non-agenda items. Two are an update regarding the Ironwood Village project. And the other is regarding the Planning Commission terms. On the Ironwood Village update, that was scheduled for a city council hearing on April 4th. And it was pulled before the item was heard because the residents objected to that hearing on the basis that the Planning Commission denial was final and no appeal was filed. The residents or the city decided to grant the applicant the right to file a late appeal more than a month after the appeal period ended. So there is currently an appeal application lodged with the city. We have been told, that the reporter was told that scheduled for June 20th at city council, but the residents have not been informed. But one of the items that I shared with you is the staff report that was prepared for the April 4th city council hearing. And that report is pretty much unprecedented. I talked to four or five of my colleagues that I worked with in the past. Between us, we have over 150 years of planning experience. And we had never seen a staff report where the planning, where the staff put forward their recommendation for approval over the commission's recommendation for denial. And so I think you need to be aware of that. And read that report and see what transpired. Your recommendation should have been sent forward. The Planning Commission report is attached to the council report to show what the staff had recommended. On the Planning Commission terms, I want you to be aware, there's a city board and commission policy that actually provides that board and commissioners' terms don't, that they stay, board and commissioners stay in their seat until their replacement is appointed. And so this whole palaver about the Planning Commission not having a quorum has been exactly that, a palaver. The cities had a solution in place. Anyone who was there could stay until their successor was appointed. My understanding is there's been some crafty interpretation that that provision doesn't apply to the Planning Commission. But that provision was there, it was able to be applied, it could still be applied if the city chooses to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Susan Zietz.
Hi, Susan Zietz, 33-year resident of Moreno Valley. This is regarding the track map, tentative track map 37001, the Ironwood Village proposal. February 9th, the Planning Commission voted yes that they were against the Ironwood Village project, six to zero. February 16th, the Recreational Trails Board met and voted six to zero against changing the master trails plan to accommodate the Ironwood Village project. February 24th, the last day for the Ironwood Village project to appeal, no appeal was filed by the owners or their attorneys. On the 30th of March, planning emailed that the Ironwood Village project is being pulled from the city council April 4th public hearing agenda. It was after this happened that we heard an appeal had been accepted after the deadline. We want an explanation. Why was this done? What games are being played? I can see how an individual like myself might make a mistake and not file an appeal on time. I also know I'd have to live with the consequences because I'm pretty sure that I'd never be granted an extension due to my mistake or ignorance. I'm just as sure the Ironwood Village attorneys aren't ignorant and knew what the dates were to file an appeal. They didn't make a mistake. Do these owners feel so superior that they can drag this out as long as they can, hoping the citizens of Moreno Valley will give up the fight? It's infuriating to see them play games with our city and its citizens. In the staff report forwarded to the mayor and the city council dated the 4th of April, the staff presented their own recommendations. As superior to the Planning Commissioners, the staff recommended that the city council approve the Ironwood Village proposal despite the fact that the Planning Commissioners had already done their job and voted unanimously, six to zero, not to recommend approval for the proposed Ironwood Village project. If the staffers get to have, give their own recommendations to the city council, then why are the city commissioners working so hard to do their job? I find it hard to believe this is standard practice as it's exceptionally disrespectful to the Planning Commissioners. We appreciate all your work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Zietz.
Hi, David Zietz, 30-year-plus resident of Moreno Valley. First question I'd just like to ask, that we heard that there was a topic to be removed from the agenda and we were wondering if that has happened. Talked to one of the commissioners about it and we just need to know if that's happening so that people that are coming here to voice their opinion on it don't waste their time tonight. So if we could get that answered soon, that would be nice. At March, at the March 30th meeting, we were still, there was still Planning Commission positions to be filled. I just wanted to tell you that we appreciate your time and effort and the knowledge and the dedication to your job. I think the mayor is behaving unprofessionally, irresponsible if he doesn't look for, look first to those who are currently serving on, as commissioners. I feel not doing so is disrespectful to those who have demonstrated, demonstrated by your service and that you are deserving the appointments. Because you have worked hard and with all, worked hard and you deserve the appointments that are there, especially the alternates coming up. I hope sanity prevails and the alternate seats are appointed. First, looking at those who are with the qualified positions. As for the Ironwood Village proposal, I don't want to just keep hushing on it, but we would like to have an explanation from the city or whoever it comes from that why we, why they accepted an appeal after the deadline. I think it's been very disrespectful to your board and your commission that they did so. Rules are rules and we all should be following them. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Hague.
Well, George makes his way forward. Item four, PEN 16-0042, has been continued to the meeting of May 25th, 2017. Thank you.
Good evening, George Hague. Understand that this may be the last meeting for some of you and I really want to thank you for your service and what you've gone through in order to have the knowledge to be on the commission. I also have concerns about what the mayor is in the process and has been doing for the last month in the appointment process. The Ironwood Village, you've heard now a couple of times. I wanted to thank you again for your vote on that project. The fact that, you know, there's no justification for doing what they want to on those lands. The fact that the city has accepted, the developers or appears to have accepted or is in the process of processing his appeal, we haven't quite figured that out. But I also was shocked that the staff went over your vote and said that staff's recommendation is basically not to pay attention to the Planning Commission's recommendation and that they will simply do what they want to do and move forward as if your vote didn't mean anything or the vote of the Trails Committee did not mean anything. Privately, you should have a conversation with them and perhaps display your displeasure with them. Couple other items. One of the things that has concerned me for many years, a lot of you know I'm, know I'm a retired school teacher. We continue to have HELOC as a truck route. Going from southwest of our city to State Route 16, State Route 60 down there. It passes three schools. I've mentioned this to several council members over the years. I've mentioned it once or twice here. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't happen. It should be done. And a lot of the litigations that I've been involved with, with warehousing is trying to force the trucks from the warehouses that we have been involved in in litigation. In fact, one of the main reasons is to force them to have to go south and not be able to use HELOC. And that was one of the main purposes of the litigation we were involved in. We shouldn't have to do that. The city should not have that as a truck route for all these warehouses and toxic diesel emissions that take place. Another thing I see on the weekends continually along Nason, mainly along Marina Beach and so forth, are signs from housing tracks. I mean, some of the signs are big as the screen here. They go up Friday night in the dark and they disappear Sunday night in the dark. They're all up and down Marina Beach, various places along Nason, some of the streets in between. They know what they're doing. They're trying to avoid certain things that should be required of them in this city. We need those signs not to be there. And they know they're not supposed to be there just by the fact of when they place them and when they take them down. So once again, I want to thank those of you who are leaving after this evening and also to thank the others. You have a good evening.
Thank you, George. I see no additional public speakers on the list, so we will now move to non-public hearing items. There is only one, and that is the selection of a chairperson and vice-chairperson. Do we have a report?
Yes, I'll give you a quick report, Rick Sansomar, our planning official. In your packet under Agenda Item 1, we've included a short written staff report. Essentially what that staff report says, you have rules and procedures that were adopted and the rules and procedures for the commission indicate that at the first meeting of April of every year, the commission has a duty to select a new chairman for the forthcoming year and a vice-chairman. The report simply states that process, the process would be for you as the sitting vice-chairman this evening to, because we're in the absence of a chairman, because Mr. Lowell, who was the chairman, has been reappointed as basically a commissioner. You'll take the nominations for a chairperson and then you'll act on that. And then the new chairperson will step in and take the nominations for the vice-chair and we move on from there. With regard to the written staff report, I did want to highlight a couple of limitations that are in your rules and procedures. And they simply state that the chairman can only serve two consecutive terms. So in this particular case, Commissioner Lowell has served as chairman the past two years, so he would not be eligible, eligible because of your rules to be selected as the new chairperson. It has no restrictions about being selected as the chairperson, as the vice-chairperson. Any of the other members up there could be selected as the chairperson or the vice-chairperson except for the two alternates. The two alternates cannot be appointed in either of those positions. And then you, as the sitting vice-chairperson, have no restrictions with regard to being voted in as the chairperson. But if you were selected as the vice-chairperson, you could only serve one additional term. And that's what's articulated in the staff report and that's really for the benefit of the public to know what you're doing this evening. And that concludes my staff report and I'll turn it over to you.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you very much. So at this time, I guess I would entertain nominations for chair, chairman.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Vice Chair Barnes to be Chairman Barnes.
I'd second that motion.
Thank you. Any other motions?
I agree with that motion.
I didn't ask for a vote. Well, seeing no additional motions.
Honorable Vice Chair, before the vote is taken, the nominee needs to accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination. Thank you very much. Humbly, most humbly. Yes. Thank you. Now, can we have a vote? A roll call or? Let's just do a group. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for your support. I appreciate it. I would hold off on the, until I prove myself.
Well, you better take it now.
Yeah. So at this point, I will thank you all for your patience while I learn what I'm doing up here, so. I appreciate it very much. Now, I'll entertain motions for vice-chair.
I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Sims.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Korzak for vice-chairperson.
I would like to second that.
I have a motion from Commissioner Sims and a second from Commissioner Lowell. Humbly accept again with your microphone on.
I humbly accept the nomination.
I'm just kidding.
We have more fun, don't we?
Any other motions? Seeing no other motions, I call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vice Chair Korzak?
Can I make a speech?
No. Does she have to change chairs now?
That's at the pleasure of you as the chairman.
I'll let her choose. Okay, next time. All right, well, congratulations. All right, having gotten those formalities out of the way, we move on to the real work of the evening.
One thing as we get on to the real work of the evening, you'll notice in the staff reports that the resolutions that were recommended this evening did still show the previous chairman as Brian Lowell. And that's because we didn't know who was going to be the chairman. But all of the resolutions will be modified in recognition of the new appointed chair and vice-chair after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Not sure that we would have even caught that. All right. Item two on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more thing?
Yes.
I know under the public comment period, you did make mention that item four on the agenda, but there was one request from the public speakers. I do want to let the public know that the item four on the agenda has had a request from the applicant for a continuance. So if there is anybody in the audience that didn't hear your comment at the beginning, we should have made that clear at the beginning of the meeting, we apologize. But in case there's anybody here, we want to let them know that.
Thank you very much. Now, item two. Plot plan for an exterior and interior remodel and addition of 791 square feet to an existing building at 14920 Paris Boulevard for a total of 24,902 square feet to accommodate 15 new tenant spaces with an existing shopping center. The case number is PEN 16-0161. We have a staff report.
And I'd like to take the liberty here to introduce this new planner, Sergio Gutierrez. Hasn't been here before. He's one of our up-and-coming, really good, qualified planners. I think you'll like his presentation this evening, we hope you do. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Planning Commission. As mentioned, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Sergio Gutierrez and I am the contract assistant planner working on project PEN 16-161, plot plan for an exterior and interior remodel and 791 square foot addition to an existing underutilized, single-tenant commercial building to accommodate 15 new tenant spaces with an existing shopping center located at 14920 Paris Boulevard. The applicant on the project is Yolong Chan. He is representing property owner Food Grill Investments. I believe the property owner and the applicant are both here to answer any questions upon conclusion of this presentation. Based on the scope of the project, it was determined that the project was a major development review, requiring review from the Planning Commission. The project site is located on the northeast corner of Paris Boulevard and John F. Kennedy Drive, as mentioned, within an existing shopping center. It is located at the northeast corner of the shopping center adjacent to Gardeners Market on the south of the property and a small ice cream parlor on the northwest corner of the property. The zoning for the, the zoning for the site is neighborhood commercial. And the surrounding environment, properties to the north include a mobile home park and properties to the east include single-family residential. And just, here's some photos of the existing conditions of the facade, the exteriors. To the left-hand corner, you have the main entrance, which is located on the west. And also on the right-hand top corner is where the 791 square foot addition is proposed. To the right-hand, left, left bottom corner, you see the existing conditions for the, behind the building, the rear of the building, which is the east side. And just to mention that there's an existing recycling facility located on, located on the loading dock. This facility is not locate, is not a part of the project. However, if this project is approved, then we would require the facility to relocate within the shopping center with appropriate application review and approval from the, from the planning division. So here's the site plan for the proposed project. As mentioned, the modifications include a 791 square foot addition to the northwest corner of the building, an interior remodel of the building to accommodate 15 tenant spaces, exterior facade improvements, a relocation of the existing trash enclosure in which the trash enclosure is located on the northeast corner of the building and is proposed to be relocated on the southeast corner of the, of the parking lot. And also, it includes the replacement of an existing loading dock to accommodate parking spaces for tenants located on the rear of the building. Also, the property owner has identified specific uses of the 15 tenant spaces. Four will be specifically restaurant uses, three will be retail, and the remaining eight will be office slash retail uses. And I just wanted also to make a note that this project does introduce front-facing storefronts to the north and east of the building. The project, the project site can be accessed from five different driveways. Two driveways on Paris Boulevard and three driveways on John F. Kennedy Drive. The site will also be accessible from the main parking area on the west side of the building. There is an existing gate located in between where the addition is going to take place on the northwest corner of the building and adjacent to the ice cream parlor on the northwest as well. A condition of approval has been placed to remove that gate to allow pedestrian access to the north and east tenants. A parking analysis will also complete as part of the review process. Based on the square footage of the uses, including restaurant, office, and retail uses and the parking, the city parking requirements, 103 parking spaces are required in which 114 parking spaces are provided. And as designed, there are adequate parking spaces provided in both the front and rear parking lots. And also to mention that there's a reciprocal, reciprocal access agreement adequate and, and reciprocal access, access agreement and parking agreement in place for the entire shopping center. In addition, landscape, finger planers will also be incorporated into the east side of the property in which will comply with the municipal code requirements and will also be providing enhanced landscaping as required per the conditions of approval. Just here's some photo examples of a few site visits that took in place within the past few months. While on site, there's been signs of dumping activity on the two trash enclosures, one located north of the property, which belongs to the adjacent property owner, and one on the northeast corner, which belongs to the current property owner of this project. And there's a photo example of the gate I was referencing to be removed to allow pedestrian access to the north and east of the tenants, proposed tenant spaces. In addition, there is limited lighting to the, in the east and north of the building. The introduction of the front-facing tenant spaces to the east and north does raise some questions with regards to public safety. Due to visibility is limited to the shopping center. However, conditions of approval have been implemented to ensure public safety by adding security cameras and lighting to exterior walls, providing a significant amount of windows to the storefronts to increase pedestrian visibility for tenant spaces on the east and north, ensuring the existing gate is removed, as mentioned, per the conditions of approval, limiting the hours of operation for the businesses till later than 10:00 PM to minimize potential concerns with proximity to residential, ensuring the lighting meets the current city standards, and ensuring the recurved gate located between the shopping center and mobile home park remains locked at all times. Here's elevation 1 of 2. This is the west elevation, which is the main. This is the west elevation, which is the main entrance, as mentioned, and the north elevation. The architectural design of the proposed multi-tenant building includes parapets, towers, vertical detailing as decorative finishes to improve the aesthetics of the shopping center and to break up the massing of the building. The building height will be increased from 28 feet 2 inches to 33 feet 9 inches, as mentioned, to incorporate the parapets and towers to improve the appearance of the building and also to screen rooftop equipment as required by the municipal code. The building materials will remain the same as stocko, and there is a new proposed color scheme, which includes earth tone colors such as cream, deep red, gray, off-white, and tan. Overall, the increased commercial activity on the north and east sides of the building may help activate areas to reduce the amount of dumping activity and provide better surveillance for the areas. A successful remodeling of the building would be an asset to help revitalize the shopping center. The project qualifies as a Class 1 categorical exemption under California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines Section 15301 for existing facilities. And in conclusion, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve Resolution Number 2017-21 and certify that this item is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act as a Class 1 categorical exemption, seek Guidelines Section 15301 for existing facilities, and approve PEN 16-0161 plot plan subject to the attached conditions of approval as Exhibit A. Since posting of the notice, I have received four forms of contact, three phone calls and one email. One call was from a property owner that was requesting more information, as well as the email as well, requesting more information on the property as far as conditions of approval for the original plot plan approval. And I received also two calls from, two representatives from the adjacent property owner Gardeners Market in regards to the parking and the overall aesthetics of the building. This concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gutierrez. At this point, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and make a presentation, if you'd like.
Any questions for staff before that?
Well, prior to that? Okay.
If you have any.
I think I've taken something out of order.
Only if any of the commissioners have questions. If there are no questions, you can go ahead as you proposed.
Anybody have a question that they'd like to introduce now?
And we hear their presentation first and then do our questions.
All right, continue, my apologies.
So in this case, we are going to have 16 retail, 15 store...
Yeah, pull the mic a little closer to you.
Okay, so, in this case, we have 15 retail and office in the remodel. So it used to have one big retail store and having the backyard is going to be just parking space. Right now, we have eight office units on the back and I increase the people to travel on the back. So in this case, it won't be a hidden point or hidden, the hidden risk for the people who are the homeless to stay on the back. So the reason I have eight office on the back. And also, the building is kind of like 160, 160 feet depth. So it's hard to divide it by a small, small tenant has 25, like 25 feet width and then 116, 116 feet depth. It's hard to find tenants kind of like this. So we just create some more tenants, some more office for people to use.
Thank you.
I'm Richard Singh. I'm the property manager for the owner. Since last week, we did went to a public hearing review about this project since January, and we did went over a few review on what we proposed in this property. Since last week, I did receive phone call and email from five people, that's including our plaza manager, Marty, and also some of our neighbor from Cadena, our neighbor in the east, her name is Juana Galan. They both have some little concern about parking and elevation of the tower in front. And as for the backyard, she has some concern about trees because the wall on outside is eight feet tall, but it's only six feet tall on her side. So there was past experience that people climbing over from outside to her backyard. So she was thinking that something that we can do about by helping, you know, with our project that we're doing to, you know, make the place more secure. But ideas, explain to them what we were trying to do. Hopefully that, you know, by bringing better tenants in the back and, you know, more camera and lighting, it will help to have those, you know, people, unwanted people in the back there, like right now. So our whole idea is trying to bring, you know, better tenants to the plaza and hopefully you will benefit.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions?
Hi, there's questions for the applicant. What, if you could just describe what made you, you know, decide on, on kind of doing this multi-tenant project and also the backend offices and how are you gonna, you know, how are you gonna track some tenants that will, you know, it's kind of hidden and tucked away in the back? What type of, how will you be addressing those challenges with moving forward and if you get an approval today?
We took over the property from the previous owner earlier, in early 2016. So before this, we have a 99 cent plus center that took up about 90% of the units. And there's another restaurant there at the corner, but they moved out in the end of last year already. So we did look into a few proposal on design idea, including mini mall or that include having a center court with food court idea in that area. But after, you know, after going through those, I reviewed because there's some security problem on public area inside the mini mall, including toilet and opening hour problem. So we decided to come back to units in the current design that we have, which every unit has its own independent access from front and back. But because the building itself is 156 feet deep and we have about 20 to 25 feet frontage, so it's not very possible for us to go through 150 feet deep buildings. So that's why we have a proposal of having one majority of the faces, the portion of the building is facing the front, but having some buildings in the back. During our review session, the same question that was asked by the official too. And in fact, they asked us to present some success, other example that has happened in other area. We proposed, we actually presented four or five different scenario, which the uses was for after-school learning center, for office, and professional office that doesn't require people that walk by, like retail shopping, but could be for designing company showroom. Right now, we have one tenant that we're working with, negotiating on an agreement right now. It's online company that they are selling their product through Amazon fulfillment center. So they would take up three spaces that we have. And those doesn't require a lot of retail, you know, petition passing by. So, so those are the type of customer tenant that we're looking for, for those spaces in the back. You know, so by doing so, I think we can bring good tenants and also, you know, help that, you know, revitalize that part of the mall, which right now it's dark and we got big items, furniture discarded, backyard and nobody watching that area right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? I do too, so go ahead.
You have some space for four restaurant, well, not restaurant, but food service. Do you have any idea of what types you're going to be looking for?
Right now, we're talking to two tenants because we don't have our official plan approved yet, so we're just on the listing yet. So right now, we're talking to one is Obah Drink Place with popcorn, chicken snack, and fry. The other one that we're talking to right now, it's a teriyaki chicken bowl. It's also a fast food chain. I like the demographic that we have in Marina Valley right now.
Any other questions? I have a question, staff. There was a mention in the conditions, I think, of the gate between the, I think, the mobile home park and the center and that that's required to be, remain locked at all times. Who owns that wall? And could we just require the condition, if they control it, can we condition them to just close off the gate if it's never supposed to be, to function?
Staff did some research into that. We went back to the original conditions of approval from 1988, I believe it is, for the shopping center. There's really no indication of why the gate was even put in in the first place, so it...
If you permit me, I know exactly why on that. That gate was put there by the previous developer, Jerry Kitterell, who, for the residents of the mobile home park, requested that. So that was part of this project. And the reason I know it very well is because that's where Hughes Market, everybody had their tenants and everything lined up and that developer made the mistake of going to the mayor and saying, I didn't have a problem with their site, to which I told the planning commission, yeah. I did not say that and they got denied, so they had to file an appeal. And I became very good friends with Stearnstein owner. So there's not going to be any touching or taking out of the olive trees in the rear of the property. Do you know?
The intent isn't to modify the trees at all, it's really to enhance the landscape.
Okay, because those all came from Paris Boulevard.
All right, back to my question. The possibility of sealing, closing off the gate? Is that an option?
Well, it is an option that could be discussed. I believe it's technically not on the applicant's property, so there would have to be some agreement with...
That's why I was asking who controlled the fence.
Right. It's the property owner that faces that north side, right? The property kind of splits towards the back of the property in terms of ownership. So the applicant might want to address that as well.
I did have a chance talking to Marty, the property manager of the company. He told me that the reason that they lock up the gates because they don't want people to go access in and out from that area, there's no reason for them to go in and out. But that's why right now, all the access going through the back is through the driveway, service to driveway on two ends. But he did tell me that right now, it's actually, the decision was made by the property management company right now because of security reason to lock up that gate. But they said if, you know, we asked him to do it because access for the tenants in the back and they wanted, you know, access to the front main parking, they could do it if we asked him to.
Okay, I think that answers my question. Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Sims, sorry.
I didn't notice in the conditions anything about processing or comments from Eastern Municipal Water District, but if this is this large, one cube type space is going to be divvied up into smaller with restaurants, is, how's that handled as part of the plot plan approval? The approvals here for this, how is that? Because there could be a significant, you know, adjustment in connection fees both on water and sewer.
Yeah, we did circulate it to Eastern Municipal Water District, but indication is we didn't receive a response to that.
If I can jump in, Commissioner Sims. Before any permit would be issued, we would first look for a release letter from the water district or any other utility provider before we issue those permits, so.
I have a question for the applicant. I've been on the fence on this specific project. My parents used to own a restaurant in a strip mall just like this. And I know the area behind the shopping centers are not exactly the friendliest of places to be. Second the sun goes down, you want to get the heck out of Dodge. I applaud you guys for trying to do something that will remove the blight from behind the shopping center and to improve the functionality. In light of what you said, I'm actually kind of impressed. Do you have any properties like this in your own management? What's the success ratio of this specific type of development?
We have other retail mini mall that we're doing, but not in this scale. So, but we did present a few success scenario, having smaller office and learning center, studio that's in the back of a supermarket and a major mall in the back.
What kind of leverage or authority do you guys have to make the tenants toe the line? For instance, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, looks like almost two-thirds of the new facilities and new office space and retail spaces don't face the public streets. So the whole out of sight, out of mind mentality means that something nefarious could go on there, some tenants could start doing shady things because nobody's driving by to visually check on it. Like as the police officers driving down Paris Boulevard, they can see, oh, 99 cent store, looks like they're up and honest, but if these guys here are facing away, nobody's going to be seeing it. So I like the idea of a online retailer coming in and filling the space or a private office, but say somebody has like a little convenience store and starts doing things they shouldn't be doing. What kind of assurance, what kind of rules would you be putting in your lease that would allow you guys to make sure that the tenants toe the line?
Well, basically, I think the rule of economic will probably make that happen because the rent in the back, it's not the same as the one retail that we're charging. So whoever that's doing business, they know the visibility and accessibility is not the same as the business that they want in putting in the back, it doesn't work. One idea that we were thinking about, the office professional building, what I envisioned was similar to all those office condo. They're in an industrial park, okay, but those are the professional company that we want to attract to our back area, just like an office. Okay, so we as a property owner, we wanted to make this project work. We don't want to put anybody there, you know, throw up the space on it. It's to our benefit, so in our case, we would, for sure, you know, we're trying to make that happen. Backside, and we did that by enhancing the elevations, by increasing the window area and door area and the landscaping so that we can attract the type of tenants that we wanted back there.
Will the tenants have the availability to, or have the option to put a sign or advertisement on the front of the building saying, hey, check around behind here because Amazon retailer, whatever's over here?
I assumed that, yeah, we could arrange that, but again, this is the type of company. It's not, we're not attracting people that pass it by.
Well, correct, my office doesn't attract people, but we do get foot traffic and we still have a sign on the building and it'd be nice to advertise in the front saying, hey, look, this is where we are. So say somebody does have to come by our delivery, they can go, oh, yeah, we're around back.
Yes, well, we could do that by having a directory with map and, you know, sure that the mailbox is probably going to be in front too. So we could have a directory, a map, and showing that, you know, there's other tenants and companies also in the back of the...
But at the occupants discretion, would they have the ability to put a sign on the front of the building? But at the occupants discretion, would they have the ability to put a sign on the front of the building?
I just want to point out, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, the signage, while it's showing on the elevations, is only shown as representative of what could be. There is no approvals being granted this evening for any signage on the building or on a monument or on any kind of a directory. The staff was, did question that because we were concerned about the directionality, the wayfinding to the back of the building. It would be a separate consideration. They have to make a separate submittal for a sign application. And those are the things that we would address then. We would take your input this evening. If these are strong concerns you have, it would help us shape that sign program or the sign permit in the future. But they are considerations we've had, only preliminary discussions with the applicant on.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I have one concern with this back of the building because Armada Elementary School is directly across the street from you. And it concerns me a little bit. Kids are curious, it's a safety factor. So, and I haven't heard you acknowledge that fact or even staff for that matter. How do you make it, you know, I wouldn't want my child to go to a learning center from the back of the building. You follow what I'm saying?
No, no, no. I said the learning center was other project, that they had those in there. The way I see it, it's office building that would be attracting to it. As far as security, we did say that we have, we're going to have lighting. We're going to have civilian camera in the back.
Lighting doesn't deal with daytime to and from school. I appreciate what you're saying, but lighting doesn't deal with daytime. Thank you.
Commissioner Sims?
My question is towards staff. On these plot plans like this where you're proposing this type of use, there's restaurants, retail space and office space. How does that work as far as, let's say, three years from now, they find out that they want to swap an office and make it into a retail or, you know, vice versa or something like that? How does that process work? Is that, is what is shown on the floor plan, site plan, is that like etched in stone, you know, per this, per these drawings? And then if somebody wants to come do something different for a tenant improvement and switch a use or maybe convert to a restaurant or widen? To say the restaurant on the corner that's facing north, that's fantastic. And they want to go three spaces over into the retail space so they can get access off of the front. Is that allowable?
So, thank you for the question. The application in front of you today is a concept. There are no identified tenants that were mentioned. So we don't know exactly which businesses might go in or will go in. The fifteen tenant spaces are laid out as a concept in terms of the possible mix between restaurant, retail and possible office. But the applicant wanted some flexibility to be able to put people into the suite. So any of the uses are permitted use on the site. So they could, they could move around from suite to suite. They, when they come in for their building permits, there will be certain things that will be evaluated during the building plan check and the building permit process for things that are more necessary for a restaurant. Once you put that sort of infrastructure in place, it starts to dictate what that space is likely to be used for. So we'll know a little bit more certainty when they come in for the tenant improvements. This application, Mr. Gutierrez in the beginning of his presentation, indicated that we brought this to you as a major development review. The questions you're bringing up are important. And we thought that instead of having an administrative decision on this without a public hearing, which is an option in our code for this, but we could use our discretion to bring it to you, was for this exact reason, to vet these concerns with you. We identified the suite as being, these suites as being unique. It is a different use that is not common throughout the city or even in other cities. So they're looking for a way to repurpose the building. The advantages we do see are that they're going to be improving the frontage of the building, the architecture. They're going to freshen it up. They're going to bring additional attention and hopefully they will get some good quality tenants in there. And that serves as a catalyst possibly for the entire center. The downside is we still aren't sure exactly on the backside, if it's out of sight, how that acts as a catalyst and what kind of activities. So we wanted to hear from you. With regard to other positives, the applicant has been working with us and the conditions of approval that we've put on the project with regard to lighting, landscaping, the improved pedestrian circulation, the removal of the gates, addressing the locked gate between the Mobile Home and this development, they were all very careful considerations. We vetted it with what we call SEPTED principles, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, to try and make it the best safe place as possible. And that's the effort we've made to put those conditions in place. But it is important for you to let us know your concerns or considerations. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
You know, I just, as a, we're not at discussions point.
Yeah, okay. At this point, I think we'll curtail the questions and move to the public comment portion if I'd like to open the public hearing. First speaker is Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents and guests. We heard a lot of important things tonight on this particular project. And I'm glad the gate came up because I went there. I went there Monday morning and I went there Monday night. And I couldn't figure out the buildings. So when I went around the nine-ten, I realized that it's a nine-ten, nine-twenty, nine-thirty. Thirty is Gardenas, nine-ten is the fifteen businesses. Then I realized that nine-twenty is the kitty corner project. So I said, okay, I saw the gates and I saw everything and I got out. And I read what the staff wrote about it. And I went around in the daytime and I got nervous because there were people hanging out. I said, okay, I backed out. I said to myself, I wouldn't want to go in that corner by myself at night. So anyway, like I said, I went back at night and it was empty. But what was left there was ten shopping carts, a lot of wood, a lot of garbage, a lot of dirt. Then I realized what the owner was trying to do for that community. He's willing to spend his own money to enhance that kitty corner where lights, retail, okay? Their gate needs to go because that's a problem between the Mobile Home and the center. They need to put the masonry back up and let people come around. In nineteen eighty-eight was a lot more peaceful than twenty seventeen. We don't have the same kind of tenants that live in there like in nineteen eighty-eight. It's different. We have maybe more rowdy people, but that's how it is. People need a place to live and change their lives. Sometimes they wind up being in the mobile home parks where they pay the least amount of rent. They have the smaller space because I've seen thousands of them, okay? But what the owner's trying to do, and you heard it yourself tonight, he's willing to work with the Commissioners and he's willing to work with the staff to improve the safety of that plaza. Not only for the tenants, but for the residents that come to do business at that plaza. He's willing to go and bend backwards for everybody. You gave great recommendations on how to improve it, okay? But that community needs an uplift tremendously. That was District Four. Now it became District Three. Now I go back, it is District Four. It doesn't matter what district it is, it still needs help. He's willing to spend his own money and do the very best that you ask and what they recommend. That's what we heard tonight. He's not willing to make anything short. So give him a chance to finish that project so he can bring businesses. And if the back business is only Amazon or trading, things like that, they only draw very little traffic, that's great. And he could keep the front for the restaurants and the retail. He's doing a great thing for that community. Finally, somebody is stepping up for Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Next speaker, Kathleen Dale.
Okay, my name's Kathleen Dale. I've lived, this is my neighborhood center. I've lived around the corner since nineteen eighty-six. And I remember when Hughes and Savon were here and I used to walk my kids around in a wagon. I think everyone wants to see this center revitalized. And I honestly believe the applicants, that that's their goal to do it. I think there's maybe a few issues that really need to be considered seriously. And maybe there's some fine tuning that could be done to make it a better project. I talked to all the residents that back up to the site, to Mr. Estrada on Casaloma, to, I've got the names written down here, Juana Galan, who's here with her children. She's the one who backs right onto it on Vanessa. She's basically the whole common line between where the storefronts would be. Her two neighbors and the three neighbors on El Greco. And basically, everybody had concerns about this. Ms. Galan, she's okay with the storefronts back there, but she has issues with the wall height and the landscaping. And she did discuss those with Richard. So hopefully, some refinements could be made to address her concerns. For myself, I think one of the issues with this is the municipal code. And the sections I gave you, I didn't keep one for myself, so let me do this from memory. That rear setback is a required setback because of the, thank you, the adjacency to a residential zone. And your code says that in that required setback, you're only allowed to have accessory activities. And you're putting primary commercial uses back there. I know the owners, the applicants have said they're only going to put office type uses or lower intensity uses back there, but this plot plan doesn't restrict that. Any use that's allowed in the neighborhood commercial zone could go in. And if somebody comes and asks for a conditional use permit and gets it, they could do any of the conditional use permit uses. I think that the main issues with this is the co-mingling of the service access, the loading access and customer traffic. Also, this project is going to direct people down to that driveway on the Paris frontage that is literally five feet from the exit from the Mobile Home Park. So you're going to have a conflict with the traffic there. So there are compatibility issues. And I gave you the definition of compatibility and also the definition of accessory from your code. So you can discuss that. I think, you know, something that could be done very easily to make this more acceptable is to put the storefronts on the east and the north, but don't put doors on them. Those could be office uses that still have eyes out onto that area to get that eyes on, a safety issue. But they would access it from the interior. There's already a corridor down the middle of the building there where they could do that. I think also these noise, traffic and hazard issues bring into question whether or not the categorical exemption is acceptable. I've got a few other things to talk, but I see my time is up. I did just have, several people had concerns about the activity from Cardenas. Apparently, that loading dock starts very early in the morning. So I don't know if that's something that staff could perhaps look into and work with the neighbors on. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next speaker, Harlan Polk.
Good evening, Council. My name is Harlan Polk. I'm the managing partner for KP Properties. We own the location that houses Cardenas Markets. Previous, it's under lease to Kroger. Cardenas is a subtenant of Kroger Company. And I've had a couple conversations with Mr. Shin. I'm here to support him in because he is investing money into that piece of property that's been an eyesore in the shopping center. But I also have concerns and I want to make my concerns known to you. I like what I've heard so far on both sides of the issue. I do have a concern with the elevation changes that he's proposed. If you look at it from the full scale, I think the towers are taking away from the importance of the anchor building. My other concerns are operational. We have a lot of truck traffic in that alley. And that alley is primarily serviced by bread trucks, dairy trucks, eighteen-wheelers, forty-five footers, fifty footers that back up to that dock. And there's a safety concern that has to be addressed. And that would be the issue that the city should look at. My understanding is that he wants to take out the dock on his building and make that into parking and entrances to his office space. I was not aware that he wanted, that the space northwest, I'm not sure which is which, could be retail or office. I understood that everything in the periphery would be office. And the only retail and restaurant would be facing this shopping center itself, the existing shopping center. But I do believe the lady mentioned people in the back, how that's not an alley that you walk through. And that isn't an alley that, with all the truck traffic. So if it's developed for office space, it needs to have proper lighting. It has to have ample space because there's going to be trucks going through there. They come in one way, they go out the other way. And it's an issue that has to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Polk. Any other public speakers? I see none on the list. So seeing no further public speakers, I want to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, it would be customary to ask the applicant to come back after the public comments if they want to rebut any of the comments.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and respond to any of the public comments? Thank you, Rick.
I talked to Mr. Harlan Polk a couple times on the phone and also just right before the meeting started. He did mention about two concerns that he had. One is the parking and the other one is the elevation of that tower. And earlier, he did think that the anchor building, the height, should be the dominant building in the plaza. So he was wishing that we could change the height of the tallest tower by, he limited two, three feet to lower it. So that way, it doesn't dominate over other building on the plaza. So to us is we could accept and we can do modifications on the height. Secondly, on the neighbor to the east, Juana Galan. He did mention about, because she has the property that's right on the east property line that's facing, the back-facing office. She did mention to us, she hoped that we could do something and maybe do some change on landscaping and having, give her more safety, maybe raising by having vegetations or landscaping to make the wall higher so people doesn't climb over to her side. So that's one of the main concerns that she mentioned to me right before the meeting started. So I guess that's the, you know, thing that, you know, I'm answering back to.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to respond to or? Okay, all right, thank you very much. At this point, I will now close the public hearing and we'll entertain discussion from the Commissioners. Anyone like to make any comments, observations? Commissioner Lowell.
I have gone behind that shopping center and turned in my soda cans and soda bottles and beer bottles and whatnot to get the CRB out of it. And that is a very scary part of the town. You don't ever want to go behind a shopping center at night, and this one is a place that you definitely don't want to go behind in the daytime. I applaud the developer for trying to fix the problem by putting in some unique uses and unique solutions to the problem. My concern still sits that there are other issues that need to be addressed as far as security of the tenants. In reviewing the conditions of approval, I don't know if this would be overstepping our bounds, but our office, well, my office, the one that I work in, has been burglarized four or five times since I've been there. It's about every three, four years, somebody breaks a window, ransacks the place, and steals computers. My employer decided to spend a little extra money and get shatterproof windows installed. And we have noise break sensors on the inside of the building, so if someone hits the window with a sledgehammer, they can't get through, triggers the alarm, the police come. I don't know if that's something that we could add to the conditions, requiring it as a building material, because it would add an extra level of security to the tenant saying, hey, we know that you don't have frontage, so at two o'clock in the morning when people are driving by, you can't be seen from the street. People are going to try to break in all the time because it's an easy target. You have this extra layer of security.
The answer to that is you have discretion as the commission to add additional conditions if you see fit. The applicant will make a decision on whether they want to, you know, move forward. You may want to give them an opportunity. If they're going to add some conditions that might add a lot of cost, but it shouldn't stop you from adding them if you think they're important. You do have the discretion to add them.
I know the cost on our building wasn't a lot more money. It was more money, but it was, I think it was money well spent on our side of the world. Then the other question that I had, which we'll get to that one. In reviewing the police conditions, I didn't see anything in there for maybe a nighttime security guard. My parents owned a restaurant off of Ironwood in Paris, and the shopping center hired a security guard that showed up around 5:00 PM and left it right before sunrise. And it gave you that extra level of security. Gave you a little bit of sigh of relief, knowing that somebody's out there walking around, making sure that nobody's staging to do anything stupid. It was just a nice thing, and I really have a hard time buying off that the backside of this building is going to be safe for the tenants without a few extra measures in place. So I would like to talk about maybe the enhanced glass, maybe a security guard. And yeah, those are the two items that I think would be a big help.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this part of the discussion is amongst the commissioners, so you should also be looking for your colleagues to see how they feel about those conditions, not the staff necessarily. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Again, I want to applaud the applicant for doing something very, you know, very novel. I really enjoy what they're trying to do, and it's beautifying, you know, especially revitalizing this shopping center. I've been to the shopping center, I know it. And as far as that curb appeal, you know, I think that anything that adds to, I know they don't want to take away from the main anchor, which is Cardenas, but I think it might incentivize them to, you know, also improve the other components of this, of the shopping center. But, you know, I agree, there's some challenges that need to be addressed, and I think that if the applicant is open, you know, is open to them, I think they, you know, we can find a way to make it work. You know, I also think, you know, and it may not work. I mean, it's something that's, I see that's very unique to, you know, to this part of, you know, Moreno Valley. I don't know how many other, you know, more urbanized areas have this type of multi-tenant condominium, you know, look. So again, I'm looking to other commissioners to bring some other ideas to the table, but from, in the core, in the basics, I like the project. I just think that other measures can be added to, you know, enhance that. And those are my comments.
All right, I have some thoughts, but if somebody else wants to jump in.
Yeah, I kind of, you know, trying to, well, first of all, I think this is, I also applaud the owner to try to clean this up. That's trying to get some utility out of a building. I kind of liken this somewhat. I mean, it isn't exactly as an apples-to-apples, but the, I think it would be, there's a, kind of like a retail office set up over on, was it Alessandro and Heacock, maybe? It's, there's some, I don't know, it's getting closer towards, it's, maybe it's Heacock. Hey, I get mixed up sometimes, but the, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, it's a lot of buildings you don't see from the, or a lot of office space and retail space and stuff like this. You'd never know it's there when you're zipping down Alessandro, or it's, so it's kind of, it's kind of like that, except the only difference is, is there's more of it at that one than there is in this particular spot. And it's not next to an old Mobile Home Park, so. But I think it could work, you know? If, with, I think, some additional security measures. I do tend to agree. And as far as the truck traffic that the other property owner, I think that's just, it's probably a reciprocal access, and that's just something that has to be maintained and as long as the parking is working and there's perfect turning lanes and stuff like, you know, adequate turning lanes and such, or the size trucks that are supposed to be going, allowed around this thing. I think that's, people just have to figure it out, and the future tenants in this would have to come to grips with the occasional trucks that are going to be going through there. But I tend to agree, the security is, that's something that's a little troubling, I think. But I think it's one of those, if it does, if they could populate it with retail or, you know, an office space, the more, I think the more you use it, the less nefarious stuff happens, hopefully. I mean, that's my naive, everybody's going to be good when there's stuff going on.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments?
I had a question for staff. The footprint proposed in the plot plan with the various suites, is this plot plan locked into exactly that number of suites? Or can they merge them? Say a tenant comes in and wants to have a larger footprint, could they tear down a wall and make it one bigger suite?
Yes, I don't think there's anything that says that they have to have fifteen suites. So in fact, I believe the applicant even mentioned that they might combine three of them for the one use that he referenced.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. As the other commissioners have stated, I applaud their effort to invest in this property. It's always a good thing. I'm a little concerned with security also, and I have to admit that I was swayed by a comment of one of the public speakers. Question of staff, is the parking that's being added in the back, is that required of the use or is there sufficient parking that that's not really necessary?
Oh, thank you. As mentioned, based on the uses that were proposed, one hundred and three parking spaces were required. Upon submission of the site plan, there was more parking provided, but throughout the three reviews, that number has been reduced to one hundred and fourteen, as opposed to, when it came in, it was one hundred and twenty. But in regards to the parking in the back, as mentioned, there is enough parking. They need one hundred and three parking spaces, they provide one hundred and fourteen. Just as the property owner mentioned, the uses intended for the back would be more office, office or even, as he mentioned, uses that will require like stores such as Amazon, small Amazon facilities. So I believe there is, as I mentioned, adequate parking on the rear side of the tenant. Overall, there's ninety-four parking spaces provided on the west end and twenty on the back. And so there's about seventeen percent of parking spaces towards the back, so.
If I may just add to that, in short, there's eleven extra spaces on the site. But because the uses are being divided with activity on the front of the shopping center and activity on the back, I wouldn't be recommending that if you wanted to see a reduction in the parking that you take them all out of the front or all out of the back. There has to be, it has to be sized appropriately to make sure that there's adequate parking for those suites on the back and the front. One of the speakers talked about a lot of the truck activity. One of the issues could be that some of the parking may conflict with some of the truck movements, and somebody may be encouraged to take all the parking out of the back just so they can accommodate the trucks. But that wouldn't lend itself to create the activity, the eyes on the parking lot that we're looking at from a security standpoint, and the parking lot configuration in terms of the landscape fingers and all that was assuming that there would be the parking as designed on your plan. And I would be encouraging, even though it's more parking than our code requires, I would be encouraging us to maintain that parking higher, because that's what they've proposed, and we're trying to get, again, more activity and more refreshed look. And we don't want it to look abandoned in the back, because if it looks abandoned, you're going to continue to get the activity you have out there. That's our, that is one of our strong concerns. So it is important that we make sure it has the ability to be activated.
Well, the reason I was asking was, one of the public speakers had indicated that the site plan shows an aisle way, or excuse me, the floor plan shows an aisle down the center that gives access to both the front and rear tenant spaces. This site really was designed as a commercial site with pretty much trucks loading, unloading in the back. And the rear is not conducive to the general public being back there. So if the floor plan is something that our review can address, I would like to suggest that, right now, if we could bring the floor plan up, right now, there's a central corridor that goes from north to south, and then it goes easterly to the back of the building. I think it's the next page.
That was one of them, yeah.
The floor plan.
Attachment I.
Can't get there from here.
Oh, Jeff.
Broke the system, Jeff.
All right.
That shows the floor plan out there.
All right, that works. So what I would suggest that we consider is taking that central aisle way that goes south to north and then exits to the east. If you mirror that, and instead of it exiting to the east, it exits to the west, and you turn that to an entryway for the rear suites, which I'm assuming are going to be eight-to-five businesses, insurance companies, professional consultants, somebody that wants some eight-to-five office space with not a lot of walk-up traffic. If you created a building entrance on the front that served those rear spaces, there'd be no need for the public to exit from the back. You'd still have the same number of spaces. The front retail sites would still have the same street visibility, and you wouldn't, and you'd eliminate the security issues in the back. Crickets.
I was talking with the community development director and building official. There would be some building considerations we'd have to take and look at with regard to exiting. Look, we want to make sure that fire, evacuation, and these sorts of things, if you're going to be loading that hallway. But if you're going to deactivate the opportunity for people to get to the back of the building, I would say that's a pretty strong security concern for us. Even if you have windows and you can see what's going on outside, that's good. But if you can't actually get out there to do anything about it, the criminals will figure that out pretty quickly. And I would have some strong concerns, so I'm not, maybe I didn't understand your recommendation, but I...
Well, I'm not suggesting that we take away the access to the back. It just becomes the secondary access, not the primary access. Because they're office space, the primary access is off the hallway. The secondary access is out the back.
And then in reality, what we see a lot on the backs of buildings where you have restaurants that might have a back door, or a haircutters, or, you know, some other suite that has, a lot of times, they leave that back door propped open so they can get out to the back and, you know, get to the trashcans and get to their parking lot and stuff. They may do themselves a disservice because they made it less secure by leaving that door, which is not really a primary entrance, unattended. And these are the sorts of things that we have to think through carefully, how that space is going to be used. And I would start to have some concerns about the recommendation on the project or whether it should still be approved that way or not. So those are just what I would add at this point.
Well, that's my thought, that's my concern, that's my suggestion. Obviously, the will of the commission will.
I was wondering if maybe the fire marshal would like to address that?
Adrienne Renison, Fire Marshal. Rick is correct that there could be some egress issues there with opening up that corridor, as well as there could be some separation issues, depending on what those individual suites were used for, and if they were merged into restaurants, and you've got assemblies versus business occupancies. And so it could cause some real issues with what could go in there if we opened up that corridor for that kind of use.
Okay. Any other comments?
If I may, one, earlier when I said about the conditions you want to add, you do have the discretion to add conditions. The process, whether you approve the project this evening, deny the project, approve the project with modifications, the process that the applicant has is the appeal. If they don't agree with what you do with the project, whether it's an approval with a lot more conditions, they can appeal that to the city council. If you deny it, they can appeal that to the city council, but that's the process. We shouldn't be negotiating that at this point. It's your recommendation this evening on what you'd like to see go forward.
I would like to add a condition requiring tamper-resistant glass, and I would also like to add a condition that they add a nighttime security guard. Anybody have any comments, questions, objections on that guy?
Does Cardenas happen to have a security guard? Does anybody know?
They do.
I'm hearing, I don't know if you heard, but I heard, in the store, but not outside of the store. If your security recommendation is to have a security guard that surveils the outside of the property, that would be different than what exists out there today from what I just heard.
That would be my recommendation.
I have another question, Rick. Could we condition the rear spaces to limit their hours so that they're not open at night? Say, you know, eight to seven or something like that?
There is a condition till ten, I think.
For a restaurant.
Is there?
Yeah, it's a ten.
Okay, all right, never mind. All right, any other comments?
No, I've got one question here. On this property where they own it, who's in charge of keeping all that litter and debris out of there? Each one of those individual tenants aren't going to go out and pick all that stuff up. And I would think if they're the, are they the property owners of record right now, that property, these fellows here? Or not?
That's my understanding, right? There's at least three different or four different parcels on this overall.
Somebody needs to step up and take care of that mess back there. It's something else. I mean, you know, we can put anything in the world in there, but if we don't maintain it and make it appealing to people coming in, they're not going to do it. You can put all kinds of, you know, non-breakable glass, and I understand it's not the greatest place in the world be, but I'm with the rest of you guys. I think it's great that they're willing to put the money forth, and I don't know if they paid for the lease on that, or, but it's got to be a pile of dough, and it's going to be probably that much again to renovate this, because each one of those are getting ADA restroom, right? Is that the way it's, the way it looks like? Each slot's getting an ADA restroom? I mean, I'm seeing the sixty-inch circle there, I assume that's for the restroom.
I think that those restrooms would be provided as the tenants sign leases and improve those spaces, and that would be, number of units would be based on.
So this is going to be tenant improvement as they go along, right?
Yes.
Okay. But who's going to do the exterior? Are the owners going to do the exterior for the tenant improvement or not? I mean, they may want to speak to that, I don't know.
The tenant improvement would be done by either the owner or the tenant. The exterior, I would think, would be done by the property owner.
In this particular case, the property owner is going to improve the exterior of the building. It's kind of like creating spec space, the tenant improvement. After they put in the exterior improvements, the hallway... After they put in the exterior improvements, the hallway, and they basically start to form a shell that can be broken up into the suites. We would, they would come through the building process and they would determine if, what size suites and what number of suites. But we don't have that level of detail at this point, but they will do the exterior.
Okay, that's good. So that, before that even gets started on the inside, the outside will be brought up to speed, right? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, unless they-
Right, go ahead.
There's, there's, there's actually five parcel in the whole plaza and it's actually managed under one PMA, a management company. They're responsible for the maintenance and security for the whole plaza, including landscaping and parking lot area.
So is that a common, common area of maintenance?
Yes.
How come it's not being done? I mean, you're paying, I'm sure you're paying can fees on somebody.
Yes, yes, we do, yes.
Somebody needs to put a fire under somebody's tail, trust me, I would.
I, I have, I have another comment.
Commissioner Sims.
Yep, it's, it's, thank you. The, um, so our office space that where I'm at, we share, it's, it's one part, it's a, well, it was developed with two buildings on, two major tenants. And so, and so we have reciprocal, we have shared parking and there, and so, but there's also one, one of the tenants or our company is the, has the responsibility to direct what happens for the overall landscaping of the entire site, the overall maintenance of the parking lot and all that sort of stuff. You know, kind of the common, not inside the building. The exterior of the building and, and the interior of the building, that's each of our own. So like for this, and I think you call it a PMA or property management, is there an association or homeowners association that's for this entire shopping center? I like the idea of having a security guard there, but I don't think it should be a sole, solely borne cost because this, the, the activity that the security guard, or the benefit the security provides, provides not just for this back corner. It provides, should be provided for the entire thing. And I think that should be somehow worked in to the CCNR or however the association is between the parcel owners of this common shopping center. They should all bear the cost that goes into, you know, for the landscape. It's just lighting, landscape, parking lot striping, seal the concrete, whatever. It should all be part and parcel, it shouldn't be one guy has to pay for it.
That cost would be paid for by the property management and that would be worked into the rent agreements. So the, the who pays it is not really our prerogative, it's-
Uh, yeah, but you're, if we add it as a condition to this plot plan approval, then this guy is stuck on it and he has no, he's stuck with it to the benefit of the, of the other shopping center owner, the, the other parcel owners. I'm not saying that I, if he wants to develop it, I'm not saying that that's not something that, I, I don't know what the cost of that is, but it's not, it is not cheap, it's, it was, it's a significant cost.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I, I just wanted to mention that once, if, if and when this project is, is approved and the improvements begin, the, the recycling facility will be relocated, correct? To another, now, is this recycling facility going to be specifically onsite on the shopping center location? Or they can completely be relocated out and, and does this recycling facility cause, um, is, is that one of the reasons there's a lot of people or individuals hanging out in the back because of the recycling facility or?
Well, it, it will have to be relocated, if there's a desire to relocate it at the shopping center, it will require some application through the city in terms of an approval for the location of it.
I'd, I'd like to, for the record, the, the recycling center, from what we found during the review of this process, was approved at the front of the building. Somehow it has gravitated to the back of the building and we do need to address that as a separate issue. And so we've been talking to the applicant about how they got there, what the approval is, and we also wanted some assurance that if this project is approved, what's going to happen with that recycling center? And since it is no longer where we think it's supposed to be, we'll address that after this evening, but it does need to be corrected in some fashion.
Thank you.
I, I have to say that all this conversation about security, to me, reinforces my feeling that the primary entrances, both retail and the business commercial, should be from the front. This site was never designed to have John Q. Public circulating in the back. It's a shopping center. Back there is loading, unloading, stacking pallets, you know, dumping trash from the, the store, the stuff comes wrapped in. All those activities, to me, aren't conducive to an eight to five business, somebody who's selling insurance or whatever. I, I realize it's an imposition probably on the applicant, but I really would lobby for making the primary entrances come from the west side. My two cents.
But I, I, I think that, you know, in these different economic times, these, you know, investors, developers want to create something that's, you know, that, that moves away from that, from that model. Yes, it was designed, you know, it's situated in a certain way where, you know, that people shouldn't necessarily be in the back there. But I think that, you know, they're attempting to repurpose it and reshape it in a way that maybe attracts a different type of, of business or, or customer. So, I mean, I, I, I understand that, but at the same time, I, I think it's, it's, it's a different approach to, to development.
All right, Commissioner.
This site has a lot of security issues the way it stands. There's a lot of homeless people dumping nefarious activities, just things that if my backyard, my house backed up to this, I would be afraid of letting my kids play in the backyard. In my tenure of working with the city, both as a commissioner and as an engineer, the previous planning official, the current planning official, the previous director of land development, the city engineer, every time I've asked them a question that is unique, I've been told the same answer, "Come up with a unique solution and we'll figure it out." They, the city encourages out-of-the-box thinking to approach, resolve and solve problems. My original reaction to this project was, "No, this is a terrible idea." However, what they're proposing to do is far better than the current situation. If I were a up-and-coming business owner and I needed a place to set up shop that did not rely on foot traffic, this would be perfect. I could get a small shop at a discounted rate because it doesn't have street frontage. If I had, my security concerns met with enhanced glass, maybe a security guard, even on my own company could hire it and I got a discounted rate on my, my lease, this would be perfect for an upstart company. It would fix the trash dumping problem because there would be people coming in and out all the time. The homeless people wouldn't be sitting there anymore because they don't want to be seen. There'd be people shooing them away all the time. I think this is a unique situation, the city doesn't have much like this in the city. I, I think we should give it a shot and if it doesn't work, well, we've learned from it. I mean, ultimately, the capitalistic market will figure out if this is a good or bad idea. My only concern is security and if we can address the security issues, let's give it a shot. And if they don't like it, nobody wants to lease it, well, that's the rest of the land, the, the lease the landlord has and they can come up with another idea. But I think shooting it down because we think it should be facing the front, well, that's not our call. We're not here to tell them, "You have to have everything facing front." I mean, we could have that, we do have that authority, but that's not a prerogative.
Well, this is really the future of shopping centers that it's being addressed right now, that coming up with methodology and auto repurpose because stores are falling by the wayside.
Believe they're looking for more of an internet-based business such as someone that sells a lot on Etsy or someone that sells on these and basically they just need a box to run their business from, not a total retail where people will be coming in and out. Those businesses are booming, the things that are selling. I sell on the internet, but I'm not looking for a space right now, but it, I-
I know a place, I know a place that's cheap.
We know where there might be one.
But I, but I understand the concept of new types of business and usages-
Correct.
That are more contemporary and this seems to be a growing trend in business. I applaud them for trying this, whether they will find the tenants or not, I don't know, but it, it is an attempt to, to revitalize something that is just not very good right now.
Right.
I, I, I like it's not going to be a ninety-nine cent store or, or mini mall. That's a, would be a, this is, that, this is a, in my opinion, a vast improvement over that. So I, I guess my only, my only concern about this is, is this saddling up the, because this is the first, the last guy in, he, this developer or owner has to pay for the security. I, I don't know how that works, if there's, if, if we were to delay a vote or, or add, you know, I don't know if we can ask the owner to, to comment on this, but there, the other property owners will benefit from having increased security on this thing. I also think that getting, the city should do code enforcement and get the, the, the can cycler guy out of the back. I think that's where you're attracting some of the nefarious activity, people that make it a living to go pick up cans. That's probably not where you want them to hang out, in the back of buildings all the time. So I think if you move that to the front, that would probably help the situation and you improve this. I think, I think it moves things forward.
Well, it sounds like we're moving towards a consensus, are we to a point where somebody wants to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like some clarification on the condition. How would you word a condition requiring the tamper-resistant glass and security guard?
We can work on that, I'll let Chris address in a second. I did want to speak to the other condition with regard to a security guard and putting that burden on the, the entire management of the center or somebody else. The only applicant we have is the applicant and so if you put any condition, you can only place it on him. You can't, you can't place it on somebody who isn't speaking for themselves or isn't, isn't an applicant of record. So that's, we can add the, the language with regard to the security glass? Do you have any language on that yet, Chris?
Sure.
The Marine of L.A.P.D. would appreciate a security guard there.
I, I think we've all spoken a fair amount about letting the marketplace drive the development. It's going to do the same thing to security. If it's not safe, they will get a guard. If the windows get broken, they will put in stronger glass. So I think it's not appropriate to require right out of the gate that they do that.
I, I think the security guard might be overstepping, but I think the tamper-resistant glass is a building material. I think that's at least something we should-
I, I think that's a choice that is totally up to them. I, I wouldn't support that condition.
I agree with you. I wouldn't support it either. And then if things happen, they fix it.
Right. I heard what you said.
Heard what I said, okay.
Okay.
Oh, the minutes heard me.
I don't know if the minutes heard you.
Do you think maybe we should see, we want to go for it, see how many people feel that it should be a-
We have more to do tonight.
Yes, we do.
Is somebody in a position that they want to make a motion?
I, I would like to add the motion, the condition of the tamper-resistant glass. I would like to make that motion.
Make that motion and we'll see if somebody seconds it.
Let's do that. How, how would you word that mo, that condition? The wording I would recommend would be, "Prior to issuance of a building permit, building plans shall identify shutter-proof window glass for all north and east-facing windows as approved by the community development director."
Yeah, it works for me.
Sounds good for me. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-23 and certify an addendum to the previously adopted negative declaration for plot plan. Am I on the right one? I'm on the wrong one. I would like to recommend that the planning commission approve Resolution Number 2017-21 and thereby certify that this item is exempt from the provisions of the California Equality Act, SEQA, as a Class 1 categorical exemption, SEQA guideline section 15301 for existing facilities. And two, approve PEN 16-0161, plot plan subject to the attached conditions of approval included as Exhibit A as amended, tonight.
I'll second.
Right. Oh. How do you do that?
Mine's not coming up at all.
All right, having a motion and a second, I guess that calls for a vote. Wow, end vote, sorry, thank you, Brian. The motion failed, four to three.
So anybody want to make a new motion?
So now-
Now, what are, what are our options?
It's, you simply seek alternative or a different motion.
Okay.
We seek a-
Would anyone like to make a subsequent motion?
Can I, can we change the condition after first break-in?
After first break-in?
Well, I, before we make, or we go into motion-making, we, we, there was, there's still a hanging chat that, that we haven't, we've kept on this. So what about the issue about the, the height of the fence? We, we haven't, the discussion on the height of the fence that was brought up?
I think, I think the fence might already be at the maximum heights allowed by the city if it's eight feet on the other side.
Yeah, it is.
So we might not have the ability to change that.
I, I think she wanted landscaping.
Well, she is getting landscaping.
I don't remember, that was a long time ago.
One, one item with regard to the fence, the fence circulate, circles the entire development and it doesn't, it crosses property lines. So we might have an issue with regard to where you can actually condition them to do the improvements to the fence.
Their response to the-
With regard to the height of the fence, I'd have to look into it a little further in terms of what provisions we have, how tall it is on one side versus the other. I don't know the details on that exact, on these conditions at this particular site, so I apologize.
Well, I, I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to hold up the process here, but at the end of the day-
It's too late.
I already am. So I'm not, I'm, I'm going to withdraw, I'm going to leave the hanging chat hang and as far, because I think once there gets development, I think the security should improve there and getting the can recycling thing in the front.
Yeah.
Or relocated elsewhere.
Yeah, I, I think everybody agrees that this new development will be an improvement and much more secure than the previous uses, so, for what that's worth. Anyone like to make an alternate motion?
I will.
Okay.
Okay. I, I recommend that we approve Resolution Number 2017-21 as submitted by staff, as written.
A motion by Commissioner Korzak, a second? Second from Commissioner Baker, all right.
Have the vote up there.
After your roll call note?
There we go.
Ah, all right, will the mover, hit the mover button? And the seconder?
Okay, there.
All right, please vote. It now, that motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations. Very wrap-up.
This is an action by the planning commission which is appealable. Any interested party that would like to file an appeal on the actions tonight can file an appeal within fifteen days of this action. The appeal should be directed to the community development director. If we do receive an appeal, it would be an appeal to the city council for their action and it would be agendized within thirty days after receiving the appeal.
Thank you, Rick.
Them up pretty good.
I, can we take a five-minute recess? All right.
Boss, you're the chair.
I guess I don't have to ask, huh? We are taking a five-minute recess. We are now moving to case three. Gordia Business Center Project, PEN 160100, a plot plan, and PEN 16-0101, a variance. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Chair Barnes, members of the planning commission. My name is Jeff Brachon, Associate Planner in the Planning Division and I'll be presenting the, the project to you this evening. The, the applicant, Core Five Industrial Partners, and just one correction too as I start, the staff report lists Prologis, I believe, as the, as the owner of record and that has since changed. Core Five is, is also the- Core Five is, is also the, the owner of record of this project. So, the, the applicant, Core Five Partners, has submitted an application requesting approval of a variance to allow for a larger single building than the business park zone development standards would typically permit, and that's due to unique site constraints of the project site. The same applicant has also submitted a plot plan application proposing the Bordea Business Center Project, which would include, or propose to develop, rather, a 99,978-square-foot industrial building of concrete tilt-up construction on a 6.71-acre site located near the southwest corner of Bordea Avenue and Hickock Street. The business park development standards do limit a single warehouse building to no more than 50,000 square feet. As stated, the project proposes to build a single building of 99,978 square feet on the project site. A site area of 6.8, of 6.71 acres could typically accommodate the development of two buildings of 50,000 square feet. In this case, that's not possible due to, due to unique site constraints, which include the site's shape, which is triangular, the location of the storm drain channel along the eastern property line, and a 100-foot-wide easement to the Department of Water Resources for the California Aqueduct, and also a 20-foot easement for Eastern Municipal Water District for a sewer easement that runs along the westerly side of the project. The shape of the developable area of this site is irregular. It poses challenges when designing a project that would maximize the available building area, and, and, while still having to meet required setbacks, building separation, building height and parking requirements. And in this case, looking at the findings for a variance, the stricter literal interpretation enforcement of the limitation on building area to 50,000 square feet or less would result in a practical difficulty or a, or an unnecessary hardship, not otherwise shared by others within the surrounding area or the vicinity. The plot plan for the project proposes, again, the development of, of a 99,978-square-foot warehouse distribution facility. That would include parking for employees at 87 parking spaces and trailer parking for the proposed dock doors at 25 parking spaces. The majority of the truck court and parking areas would be oriented away from the residential properties to the east. The majority of the truck court would also be screened by the building itself, with a small portion of the truck court screened by a perimeter concrete tilt-up wall along the eastern side. And the west and south sides of that truck court that are within the aqueduct would be screened by landscape and, and a tree row. Primary vehicular access to the site is from two driveways on Bordea Avenue. There would be no access to the site from Hickock Street, and there would be additional emergency access to the rear of the building that would come from a shared driveway on Bordea Avenue, which exists now and is used by the city parks and community services staff, and also Riverside County Flood Control for access to a community trail and to the, the storm drain channel that's located there. The project site is bounded by vacant business park and business park mixed-use properties to the north, existing warehouses in the light industrial zone to the west, March Air Reserve Base to the south, and existing single-family residences to the east. The nearest residential property line to the east is, is more than 250 feet away from the project site. Project design includes architectural treatments on the building's north, east, and south elevations where those are visible from the public right-of-way. The building is separated from the residences to the east by reverse frontage Parkway along Hickock Street on the east side, by the width of the street itself, by the segment of the Hickock Storm Drain Channel, and also by the trail segment that runs along the east side of the project. Additionally, there's a detention basin as part of the project design that is located between the trail and the building. With regards to the environmental review for the project, an addendum in initial study checklist to a previously adopted negative declaration for this area, which would include, which included a development concept for the project site. An addendum was prepared by EPD Solutions in, in a manner that's consistent with Section 15162 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Planning staff has reviewed the addendum and worked with the preparing consultant to ensure that the document is comprehensive and consistent with SEQA requirements, and the addendum represents the city's independent judgment and analysis for this project. Public notice for this project was completed per our code with notice published in the newspaper, mailing notices going out to residents within 300 feet and the site being posted. In response to those noticing efforts, I did receive two phone calls. One from a resident who had questions about the project, but ultimately stated opposition to, to the idea of a warehouse being built at this location. She indicated she would provide comments, but I never received written comments. And additional phone call with questions about the status of the project and whether the, the city had received any inquiries. And then, before you this evening, is a copy of some correspondence that we received before the meeting from another resident that, that I believe was stating concerns about the proposed project. One last correction to, to the staff report, and this was something I thought we'd corrected before the staff report was published and made available, is the, the order of the recommendations that we'd be making to you this evening. And so, it's important to note that we would recommend the following, that, that the action on the variance be the first action that the planning commission takes. So, staff would recommend that planning commission approve Resolution 2017-24, taking action on the variance first, and second, approving Resolution 2017-23, approving the project. And that concludes my, my presentation. I'd be prepared to answer questions for you, and there are representatives here from EPD Solutions to also assist with any questions you might have about the, the addendum or technical aspects of the project.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions? Commissioner Lowell.
Good evening, Mr. Bradshaw. How you doing today?
Good.
I have a question for you regarding the zoning. One of the primary issues is that they filed an application for approval of a variance to allow for a larger building in the business park zone due to unique considerations, going from 50,000 square foot maximum to a 99,000 square foot building. What is the zoning around the project? I, I know you mentioned it, but I didn't get a chance to write it down, and I didn't, we don't have a zoning map in front of us.
I went kind of fast, I apologize. The zoning to the north is also business park or business park mixed-use, and, and those parcels remain vacant and yet to be developed. The zoning to the, to the west is light industrial, and then to the south, business park also, I believe, at the corner, and then from there, your, your outside cities jurisdiction in, in March Air Reserve Base is on the south side of Cactus. And then to the, to the east is R5 for, for residential development.
Just to clarify something on your question, it's not 50,000 max, it's a 50,000 square foot building max.
Correct.
Right? So, they could have, the total square footage does not exceed the zone requirement.
That's correct. The, the limitation under the zone is, is a single building that, that would not exceed 50,000 square feet. But yes, you're correct, there could be multiple buildings of 50,000 square feet on the site.
Okay.
So, the question I was getting towards was on the single larger footprint of 99,000, practically 100,000 square feet.
Yes.
Does that fit with the business park, or does that fit with any of the zoning surrounding it, or is this going to be the sole building that's going to be out of place because of the variance?
In terms of the size and how it relates? On building it of that size.
I think the exhibit that's up right now will show you that the closest building to it is, is larger, almost longer than the existing site. So, the 100,000 square foot building is going to be slightly smaller than the building that's adjacent to it. It, but that building is in light industrial zoning.
And what I was getting towards is that the building that's being proposed is in conformance with the surrounding buildings and the surrounding projects. It's not going to stick out like a sore thumb, having a huge Skechers building in my neighborhood.
No, that, what we've found is that, that rather than having two 50,000 square foot buildings, the 99,000 square foot building still fits on, on a site, and it would be compatible with or consistent with the buildings that are around it. It is not a ginormous building, if that's what you're looking for.
That, that's kind of what I was going for. Would it, would it be a better idea, instead of getting a variance, to do a change of zone, to change it to light industrial, so it'd fit on there better? Or?
The, the change of zone is an option that would be considered, but I believe it would also require a general plan amendment and a change of zone to get to that. And so, this was an option, because we looked at it carefully in, in the zoning ordinance, that the, the size of the building, which is different, it, it's kind of unique because the use is 50,000 square foot buildings, but development standards are for usually related to size of, of things that can fit. And so, in this case, we're, we're bringing it to you as a variance for the size. It's still, warehouses are still allowed as the use. And if we, if they came in and built two separate 50,000 square foot warehouses, you'd have 50, you'd have 100,000 square foot of warehouse occurring on that site. Trying to fit the two buildings of 50,000 square feet on the site became difficult when they tried to actually lay it out in terms of circulating the trucks through it and fitting the parking on there and looking at all the other requirements. So, this was kind of a can-do, let's try and, and find a, a solution that fits into what we believe our variance provisions allow.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? No questions. Well done, Mr. Bradshaw.
We shall see.
Yeah. All right, seeing no other questions, would the applicant like to come forward?
My name is Alan Sharp. I'm working with Core Five in the development of this project, and we've developed numerous projects in the city of Moreno Valley in the past under a different name, and we're proud to come back with another, what we consider to be institutional high-quality project. Basically, I'm here to answer questions, but I just wanted to make a couple of points. One was with respect to this building's size. Once again, the option to go the 250s presented some things that, it's, it's kind of ironic, we felt it was more harmful to the community to have 250s, and the reason is, if you look at the layout of the building, the back of the building screens all visual site activity as opposed to what, a 50,000 would have a large gap, it'd have to be big enough to allow trucks to maneuver in that area and whatever. Due to the trapezoidal nature of the site, you can see that that would create a pretty unmarketable building. This particular building size also has a, a strong markability presence, and I've heard it referred to as a warehouse. Certainly, it could be that, but I think it's also fair to say it could be a corporate headquarters. This, this particular size, we cater to some folks who would either bundle or manufacture or create some kind of, for example, in the e-business, which is, as you are all aware, is starting to shrink down, and some smaller buildings now, gives us that flexibility to cater to those types of businesses, not just strictly the larger Amazon-type businesses, but some of the smaller ones. And what we've done is with the screen wall, this is a six-month process, so we've, we've developed a screen wall to screen anything that might occur on this, that very south narrow portion of the trapezoid, so as to not give consideration with respect to the DB rating and what have you that we would have for sound attenuation to the neighbors to the east. And we have, and your, your staff has been very, very good at requiring the necessary reports, be it traffic, air quality, GHG, and what have you, to verify that there is no significant impact with respect to going from 1100 versus 250s. Of course, I would argue that, in fact, it was our choice that it would be less damage to the, to the immediate area with the single 100. And the building has been, the fenestration on the building has been added to three corners, so the building will look higher in, it won't just be a, a massive concrete wall to the street. And then there's a channel and a fire access road around the building, which separate it from the street as well. So, you have quite a distance from the actual street before you get to the building, once again, of which, there's no way for sound to go through the building and then head out towards the residence to the, to the east. And with that, I'll just answer any questions you may have about the structure, any concerns you might have about it, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Questions? Apparently not.
Do you happen to have any tenants in mind?
We have, yes, we do. We have one, which, you know, I, I can't disclose, but-
We'll disclose yet.
We do have one that kind of fits the model of what I just said. It is a tenant that's, not to create a rivalry here, but it is a tenant that's competing not in one of my buildings, but in another building, in your immediate neighbor, that is competing, and it's a building that would have point of sales and what have you as well, that services, ironically, services a lot of these types of buildings in the local area.
So, if the building was built, it wouldn't sit vacant for too long?
Not in this market. We believe the market's ripe. This is a much smaller building than I typically would build, to speculate. It's a little, little, small for an institutional speculative building, but it does seem to fit, and it takes a, you know, almost irregular, irreusable piece of property and makes something productive out of it, as opposed to, what, a storage yard or something where you might end up with a trapezoid like this. So, I think the outcome for the city is pretty positive, and we have, with the drought-tolerant landscape, the LED lighting, you know, the reflectors, everything is set to cause as little encroachment into the residential as we can to the east.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Okay, I would just like to say, if there are any SEQA-related questions, we have EPD here, they'd be glad to answer anything with respect to, if anyone had any questions about entitlement or issues, you know, with air or anything like that, we can, we can respond to those. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, let's open the public hearing. The first speaker, Rafael Brugeras.
Good morning, Chair, commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. When I got my, my notice, when the city clerk sends out the flyers or the agenda, I looked at every one, and I was on page 80 of the agenda, and I looked at the, the site area in 6. something, and I read, "This is not possible for the project site to do, to do your, your unique site consistence, which includes the site triangle shape." So, I said, "Okay." I Google, I mean, I GPS myself there, I said, "Oh, I know the corner very well." So, the first thing I did was parked my truck next to the water drain where the runoff goes, and the first thing I looked over, and I saw the houses. And I said, "Okay." I looked at the impact, that's the first thing I said, I did. So, then, there's a concrete, excuse me, I'm sucking on a cough drop there, sorry. So, there's a concrete from Bonita all the way to the other side. I didn't know what it was. So, anyway, I took my truck, and I drove down the concrete on the side of the Jones String, and I didn't know that the other side was cactus. I said, "Oh, all these years I've been running up and down, I didn't know that the two things were like that." So, anyway, what I did was, I looked at the project, I went down from one end of the street to the other, I made a U-turn on cactus and went back. And when I got to Bonita, I made a left, and I went all the way down to the end. So, I learned something. We have the strong, the storm drain, and then we got the flood control in the back. And then we got a, a unique shape that this developer wants to build his project on. And I thought about Nevada, how we go to Nevada quite a few times, and every time we go there, we see a brand-new building in a small area shaped into a hotel or office building. Think about the unique stuff that they do in Nevada that we can do here in Moreno Valley. This developer is going to take a triangle shape, instead of building outward 250s, he's going to build 199 and still meet all the requirements that the city set, okay? Still meet the requirement setback, building separation, building height, and parking requirements. The staff is doing a great job. I thought about Jeff just now, when he got this case, how is he going to handle this unique triangle shape? And to try to tell you how it works so well. It can happen. We have to think outside of the box. We can do things in different shapes by going upward and still meeting all the requirements around it. Nothing's impossible. If they think you do it in Los Angeles and Nevada, we can do it in Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Next speaker, speaker, excuse me, Kathleen Dale.
I do have one this time, thank you. The handouts include a zoning map for you, so maybe that- The handouts include a zoning map for you, so maybe that'll be helpful for you when you get into your deliberations. My name's Kathleen Dale. I don't, I don't live near this project, but the project does interest me, and I did go out and speak to eight of the neighbors in the area, all who were opposed to the project, and I can't explain to you why they don't come out, but I know these meetings are overwhelming and intimidating for, for regular citizens. I think that Commissioner Lowell hit the nail on the head on this one. The question is not whether this is a good project or not, but whether this project is permitted by the zoning. And the materials that I've given you include the permitted uses table from the zoning ordinance for the BP zone, and this 50,000-square-foot building size is in the permitted uses, not in the development standards, and you cannot grant a variance to the permitted uses. You can grant variances, and I've given you the excerpt from the Development Code from, from development standards, but not from the use. So I think with the, the action that's in front of you tonight, you know, you have three options. You have to deny it because you can't make the findings, or the plan has to be revised to not exceed 50,000 square feet in the building area, or you have to come back with a zone change to light industrial. I think, you know, on, on the, the front of the zone change, I don't think it's wise because if you look at that zoning map and you look at your purpose, your industrial zoning designations, the business park zone is set up as a buffer between residential and other sensitive uses and, and the light industrial uses, the more intense industrial uses. That's in the, the purpose statements of your various industrial zones. So myself, I think, you know, it really should be revised to a 50,000-square-foot building to comply with the zoning, or come back and see if the rezoning can be supported. If there's going to be an intent to approve the project as it's before you, I think that there's a few minor things, and I did discuss these with Mr. Sharp this morning, or this afternoon, maybe it was. You know, the building has four docks on the south end of the building, and it's really hard to see on the reduced-scale drawings, but if those docks were removed, if the wall height was increased around that southern edge of the project, because that, that southern dock area, it lines right up with Powell Street, and all the activity and the commotion from that is just going to shoot straight down that street at those homes. And then also, all of the residents there, every single one of them is concerned about the truck traffic on Heacock, and as George mentioned to you, Heacock is becoming a major truck route. They were all concerned about trucks coming out on Brodea, and if something could be done to restrict truck, truck, truck traffic coming out on Brodea, I think that's about the best you can do with the plan that's before you. The residents said they all remembered when the other projects were approved, that the original design, that there were not supposed to be trucks coming out on Brodea, and they, they lived there then. I didn't have time to research it, and Mr. Sharp said he didn't recall that that was on the record. So, good luck.
Pardon me, thank you. George Hague.
Good evening, George Hague, resident here in Moreno Valley. I had something I was printing out to speak on, and then my printer didn't work, so I quickly emailed it, and hopefully you may have it. I don't even have it in front of me. So we'll have those comments in front of you, and I'll add some additional comments to you. There I am, thank you very much. But adding to those comments, since I was sitting back there, it's concerned about the toxic trucks going up and down Heacock, past three elementary schools, this simply adds to it. See nothing in the conditions of approval to try to force them going down south or some other way to exit into 215 rather than going north past the school's signage. There's different ways with curbs to force trucks to go in certain direction when they leave a project at least. Those things are not there, I don't see them in anything that the city puts together on warehouses on the southwest part of our city, and they definitely should. I continually hear about 250,000 square-foot projects, and yet, the original negative declaration was for an 82,000 square foot. And so this project is actually increasing by 17,000 square feet, the approval that was taking place under the mitigative, or under the negative declaration. So it wasn't 250,000, it was an 82,000 square foot footprint, according to the staff, the documents that are before you. They also talk in that declaration, it says, "Under greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas impacts were not analyzed and adopted negative deck because existing SEQA criteria and thresholds for analyzed greenhouse gas did not exist at the time in 2005 when the negative deck was prepared." Then on the next page, it says, "Furthermore," and then they talk about all these conditions that can take place, and then it says, "Furthermore, the proposed project was, would not result in any new or more severe greenhouse gas-related impacts and would be generated by building an 82,994 square foot as analyzed and adopted negative deck." Well, they first said it wasn't analyzed in the adopted negative deck, now they're referring to it as analyzed in the adopted negative deck. Then it goes on to say, "No new impacts nor substantially more severe greenhouse gas impacts, emissions-related impacts would result from the adoption and implementation of the proposed project. Therefore, no new or revised mitigation measures are required." So once again, it was not analyzed, and yet then they say, "Well, compared to what was analyzed, there's no additional impacts. Greenhouse gas impacts are substantial in our area, we should be very concerned about them, and more needs to be done on this." I wrote some additions to what I also wrote earlier. I thank you for your consideration of what I have mentioned, Ms. Dale has mentioned. Forward for your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hague. Any other speakers? I see none on the list. That being the case, we'll close the public hearing. And...
Do you want to bring the applicant back up to rebut?
Ah, I forgot that again. Mr. Sharp, would you like...
It's a learning...
Yes. My apologies.
Thank you so much. Let me just say this, yes, I did, I did speak with Kathy a few hours back, and unfortunately, I hadn't had a chance to speak with her before, but we did, we did have some conversation, and I've agreed to give some consideration, but I would like to say this. And we can see that the, the reason for the analogy of the 250,000 square-foot buildings was because that was the seller of the property, what Prologis had run through the city and had been kind of adopted by, I think, a lot of us as, 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 as what was being planned. So when we, when we bought the project, that's what they had proposed. So it's our apologies for that, and we do agree that it, it is in fact, the original analysis was done based on 82,000 feet. But let me address the doors to the south. The reason the doors to the south were put there is because of the trapezoidal shape. Once again, that's a little creative thinking as to how do we not isolate a major quadrant of the building, if you will, from access? I would be willing to cut those doors back, have them or something, if that would please some of the citizenry or whatever, to reduce it. I just didn't want to completely kill that into the building. With respect to the screen wall height, the, it's our intention to screen completely the trailers, and so we would certainly be happy to live with a condition that would require a complete screening of any trailers that would be parked on that southeastern portion of the building. I believe that's what Jeff's done. Matter of fact, I believe that's what we have, but I'll, just in case that isn't covered properly, I'll address Kathy's issues and say, "Yes, we, we, we agree, and we will do that." I can understand that. With, with respect to the, the truck routes, one of the reasons, you know, when you're doing your due diligence, you're buying a project, you look at where truck routes are before you place your bet. We have bought and purchased this property, so you, you look at that, and, and we do have, you know, we have it on good record that, in fact, those are truck routes. However, that being said, we'd be more than glass, glad to post signs and try to put it in the leases or whatever, that, that the tenants would try to direct their traffic on a westerly route to Brodea to minimize whatever traffic is, is proposed to go up and down Heacock, even though we are fully permitted to do that as it is a truck route. And then with respect to the other issues on entitlement, we understand there are some different opinions, however, it was well-vetted with EPD, with the city, and we have looked at this legally. So I'm going to turn this over. If you would like to hear more, if you wouldn't, then we just won't, but if you'd like to hear a little more on, on the route that we're taking with respect to the zoning versus the addendum and what have you, then Connie would like to speak that, would speak to that with EPD, and appreciate your indulgence there. And prior to me stepping down, is there anything else you'd like me to address that's been discussed?
Mr. Chair.
Does appear so.
Mr. Chair, with regard to Connie speaking, we also want to acknowledge that Connie is representing the environmental aspect of the project, which is really an extension of the staff as well, so we, we're welcome, Connie, to come up and actually add...
I hope I wasn't out of line with the chair.
No, 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 no. She's working on, for both the applicant and the, and the city, but, but the environmental document is something that we have to substantiate, that we provided independent review on, and we have, but, but she works with us on that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Evening, commissioners. My name is Connie Dobrevna. I'm an environmental consultant that prepared the addendums in front of you, and I wanted to address a couple of items that the speakers have brought up. Number one is the greenhouse gas analysis. The speaker is correct that the conclusion was erroneous. The GHG was never analyzed as a part of the original document in 2005 because it wasn't a requirement of SEQA. So what we did with this document is to actually model 99,000 square feet of development to see whether, from existing conditions, whether there would be any significant impact. There were none. And when you do an addendum, our job is not to look at the full development, even though we did. Our job is to only look at the delta between what was previously approved, which is 82,994 square feet, and the 99,978. So that's what, the only requirement we have under SEQA, but we actually analyzed the full development throughout the entire document, and there were no significant impacts. We also remodeled and did a new health risk assessment to see whether the truck routes going up Heacock and going towards the 215 and the 60 would have any impacts on the residential uses, and they wouldn't, no mitigation measures were required.
Thank you. Any additional questions? There's none, thank you very much.
I, I just, I, I would note, this is, the center point, specific plan or, plan was done probably in the 80s when this was originally conceived, or 90s when this was conceived, and I, I think you're just seeing an extension of its finally manifestation of things going vertical now. So, and I, looking at the cross-sections of the provided on attachment I, you look at the south, the south elevation, it looks like there's significant wall structure, screen walls to, to screen out, or, excuse me, the east elevation was, is the one I think of concern. It's kind of the front. There is, you know, there's screening there for the, for the docking, and then it looks like it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 130 to 160 feet from the buildings to the actual center line of Heacock. So there's quite a bit of distance between the actual building, which for the most part looks like it's, it's more of a, just a straight, it's just building. There's no activity on that side. So anyhow, I, it was, I would tend to believe that there's minimal impact as far as, you know, seeing trucks per se driving on the property in and out. I, I don't, I can't speak to the Heacock truck traffic, but if it's already a truck traffic or, or route, it is what it is.
Thank you.
Some comments is...
I'm sure you have those.
Is Heacock a designated truck route? Is, I know there's a lot of discussion on that, or...
Good evening, commissioners, excuse me, yes, Heacock Street is a designated truck route throughout the entire city.
Thank you.
Do we have the truck route map available? Oh. Perfect.
That works really good. Okay.
That's all right.
I'll log in mine, too, maybe between the two.
Thanks, Eric.
Here's somebody.
Sure. Anybody wanting to see this, or just me? Okay.
Just pass it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, the site plan shows that the only two entrances and exits are on Brodea. There is no exit or entrance onto Heacock.
That's, that's correct. There is no access from Heacock.
And in order to direct traffic away from Heacock, you'd have to make a left turn on Brodea, which would be not very advantageous. So I think a right-in, right-out would be a better mechanism, and you'd have to go to Heacock regardless in order to make it to Cactus, which is a freeway off, a freeway exit or north. So I, I, I see the concerns, but I, I don't see there's an easy way to remedy it, and I think what's proposed is probably the best use and one of the better designs I've seen.
Sure.
One of the other questions I have, this is just kind of a little bit out there. The California aqueduct is going right through the project. It has a Department of Water easement. The city has a trail, master plan trail, plan that goes on top of that easement, but it looks like the trail stops at Heacock, and it continues a little bit farther down up to the north off of, I think that's Alessandro, maybe? Is there any connection from the Heacock terminus of the trail to the north?
The, the connection is actually the concrete trail segment that you see that runs north-south, parallel to the channel.
The one that parallels Heacock?
Right, so rather than continuing to follow the alignment like we see in other places over the top of the aqueduct, this is a connecting piece. And as the development occurs to the north, that trail will continue north to Alessandro, which would be the connection back to the west again to where you'd pick up the trail alignment where it is over the aqueduct going north from Alessandro.
Gotcha.
So Heacock to Alessandro, and then west to the aqueduct and up.
Yeah, I've seen that trail I've walked on, I didn't realize that's what that was. It's just the concrete path, I'm like, oh, this is like another driveway, but I guess...
Or, or a way to inspect the site.
Exactly, there you go. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anything else? Well, I think that's... Ready for motion? I think someone should make a motion if they're of a mind.
As a reminder, Honorable Chair and commission members, staff would request that first action that's taken is on the variance.
Yes. Separate votes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we, the planning commission hereby approve resolution 2017-23 and thereby certify an addendum to the previously adopted negative...
Mr. Baker.
Am I on the wrong one?
Yeah, we have to do the second one first, the variance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dash 24.
I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Okay, got it. So, let's spin on, okay. So we start off with move that we approve resolution 2017-23. Am I on the right deal?
24.
24, or 24? Oh, I could go down here, I'm sorry. So what, okay, this approved resolution 2017-24 and recognize the variance application of PEN 16-0101 has been included in the project description of the addendum to the previously adopted negative declaration, and has therefore been fully analyzed pursuant the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and then also approved variance application PEN 16-0101 based on the findings contained in this resolution. That it?
That's it. You want to hit the mover button?
Keep that. It's not up here right now, let's see. I got it.
There we go.
How's that?
A second? Seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Motion carries seven to zero. Motion carries seven to zero. Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Lowell, keeping me on the straight and narrow. We need a motion now for Resolution 2017-23.
I'll make that motion.
That's the one.
Oh, and we have to do this verbally, roll call. So a motion from...
I, I would like to make a motion. The recommendation of, of the Planning Commission, approve Resolution Number 2017-23 and certify addendum to previously adopted negative declaration for plot plan PEN 16-0100 pursuant to the, pursuant to SEQA guidelines and approve plot plan PEN 16-0100 based on the findings contained in this resolution and subject to the attached conditions of approval included as Exhibit A.
We have a motion, a second from Commissioner Nickel. And we have a roll call vote.
Alternate Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Korsak?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowell?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Nickel?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. And I think that concludes the case. So do we have a wrap-up from the Chancellor?
Yes, there is. You've taken two actions tonight. One is on a variance and one is on a plot plan. Each action is separately appealable to the City Council. If any interested party would like to file an appeal on either of the actions, they would have to file a separate appeal for each of the actions. That appeal should be directed to the Community Development Director within 15 days of this action. If we do receive any appeals on either of those items, we would agendize it for a City Council consideration within 30 days.
Thank you. Any closing comments?
I do. I would like to commend and thank both Commissioners Lori Nickel and Earl Gonzalez. I do hope that they find their way back to the Planning Commission. I know tonight's going to be their last night. The City Council hasn't made their mind up yet on to who's going to be filling these vacant seats and the alternate vacant seats. But it's been a pleasure working with you guys for the last two years. I really hope to see you guys again very, very soon.
Thanks, Commissioner Lowell. I...
Thank you for that.
I second that. You guys have been troopers in a difficult situation at times, and you've handled it extremely professionally. And thank you for your service. And as Commissioner Lowell said, we would love to see you guys back up here in the dais, so. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I, I just want to say thank you for, to everyone. I've, I've learned a lot, grown a lot, and established good relationships with my Planning Commission colleagues. Specifically, you know, I, I just want to, Lori and I have been through a lot together as alternates. But I, I, you know, I, I think we've, I, I think we'll get there, you know, I'm, I'm thinking positively here. And I, I want to thank staff and, and everyone that's made our, our growth here in the city possible, so, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, I think we will adjourn the meeting until...
The, the agenda actually is reflecting the wrong date for the adjournment. I would ask you to adjourn the meeting to May 11th. There is a possibility that we need to bring the capital improvement budget to the city, to the Planning Commission on the 11th. If we do not have that meeting on the 11th, the next meeting would be on the 25th. But I'd like you to adjourn to give us the opportunity to go, come back on the 11th.
All right. With that, then, we adjourn tonight's meeting to the next scheduled meeting on May 11th, 2017, seven.
I'm hearing confirmation that the CIP won't be here until the 25th, so you, you're welcome. You can actually adjourn it to the 25th.
All right. I'm so confused. All right. We'll adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting of May 25th, 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and support.